Miller, can you hear me in the back?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, welcome to Brackett Bureau Bracket Court of Trustees, BISD. We do have a forum established, please rise for a moment of silence, followed by a right pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Any public comments?
Yes.
You got one? I have to read the back, right?
No.
I don't drink anymore. Okay, we do have a... It doesn't say who.
Norma.
Oh, Ms. Norma Sandoval.
She, I guess she just brought it to me, I was like... Dude, just stand up.
Yes, please, ma'am.
Um... I don't have a mic, do I need a mic? I'm good, right? All right, my name is Norma Sandoval and I am here representing St. Vincent de Paul out of Bracketville from St. Mary Magdalene. And I would like to present you all with a check for the cafeteria fund that you all are, the account that you have, so we would like to present the board with this check. And I also have another check, this is from Sandoval Electric, this is from our business and we would also would love to donate to your fund.
Thank you.
So...
Thank you, ma'am.
Do you want to cut?
Yes. If we get Facebook.
Cut me.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
We appreciate it.
I mean, all that donations are very well appreciated, we thank you, we know it takes a village to run this top school district, thank you. Okay, we're on item three, recognition, Mrs. Diaz.
So tonight, we want to welcome everybody, we have a full house. We are recognizing our UYL winners from elementary through junior high. We have so many students placed that we're actually just recognizing those that either got an individual first place or first place as a team. So you can see that we have quite a few students that we need to recognize. They did well across all events, from math events to social studies events, spelling and writing and oral reading events, so we're very, very proud of you. Jones Elementary got second place overall and Bracket Junior High got second place overall, so we're very proud of all of you all. If Mr. Jimenez will come up, we'll go ahead and start with secondary. Okay, so first, first place in calculator, we have Miles Edwards. Miles had helped to lead his team for a first place team calculator and that was with Christian Sanchez and Natalia Sandoval. Great job, guys. And then for maps, charts and graphs, we have a first place for Drew Dillon. And the entire maps, graphs and charts got a first place as a team, so Evelyn Davis and Gary Corona. Congratulations, guys, we're very proud of you. Thank you, good job, guys. Seventh grade calculator, we had the entire team got a first place team, so that included Bryson Woodson, Bridgette Wutron and Leah Castillo. This is seventh grade calculator. Seventh grade, yes. Thank you. Seventh grade, first place team in maps, graphs and charts, we have the team of Eduardo Garza, Bryson Woodson and Gary Corona. Eduardo. Good job, guys. Seventh grade chess, and a little side note on this one, this seventh grader actually competed against eighth graders and he got first place in chess, Weston Massingill. We'll send his certificate with him. Eighth grade ready writing, we have a first place for Hunter Davis. And then first place team for maps, graphs and charts, eighth grade, we start with first place Peyton Brenham. Joining his team, Callie Harris and Skylar Jimenez. And then wrapping up our junior high awards, we have eighth grade social studies, first place team, Callie Harris, Hunter Davis and Peyton Brenham. Good, congratulations again. So we're very proud of our junior high students, excited what they will continue to do in the future. Now I will have Mr. Miller come on up to help me with the elementary awards. We start with a first place in chess puzzle, first place Colton Newman. And a part of the chess puzzle first place team, Zachary Vanort and Walter McNew, first place chess team. Good job, guys, super proud. Okay, social studies, we have a first place for Joaquin Corona, fourth grader, fourth grader who competed in fifth grade, so big deal, first place, Joaquin Corona. And joining him as part of the first place team, Brayden Ford and Angelina Moore. Our first place social studies team. Good job, I see, I'm just a little bit... Perfect, 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 perfect. Chess puzzle, fifth grade, we have a first place team award that goes to Caricia Macheco, Alex Arazad and Romeo Ortiz. In music memory, we have a first place to Angelina Moore. And then maps, graphs and charts, first place, again, a fourth grader beating out all the fifth graders, earning a first place, Joaquin Corona.
You said that name Corona numerous times, haven't you?
I did. He's like, give me another certificate. You can use it as wallpaper. Awesome.
Good job.
So again, thank you parents for being here tonight, we know it takes a village, we know it was lots of practices, some of y'all did practices in the morning, you did them after school, you practiced probably at home, so we appreciate you very, very much. Our UYL program continues to be successful and we couldn't do it without your support, so let's give all of us just another big...
Good job to all you guys, this is the part where you guys can skate, boring stuff starts.
Can you skate? Thank you.
Anybody like to point anything out of the concerned agenda?
I just like to recognize the donations.
I was gonna say, thank you.
What is the, do we have a talk?
Yes. Yes, we'd like to acknowledge the donations, which is always very welcome and very, always used to the best of our benefit, I mean, we always use them, at least I think we do. Because golf bags are very expensive.
Have we elaborated on the St. Vincent de Paul donation?
Yes.
You have to talk about that.
Absolutely.
Please.
So, Mrs. Sandoval sits on our district advisory committee and so she was present when we were discussing a new program that we were starting, which is a cafeteria emergency lunch fund. And it was brought to our attention by one of the paraprofessionals who is on duty during lunch, that oftentimes there are students who qualify for free lunch and get their meal and finish their tray and then they find out that they're either trying to get something off somebody else's plate or they make the comment that they're still hungry and so she came to me saying, you know, Williams, yes, there is a need to help these students because they don't have money in their account and they really just want an additional entree, not an ice cream, not a cookie or a snack, but you know, they're left hungry. So we were able to open up an emergency lunch account and so that's where this donation will go and then students who are identified as needing some assistance or wanting an additional entree will be able to charge it to that emergency lunch fund.
It's all free, it's great.
And for clarification, breakfast is still free for all the children, correct?
Yes.
Breakfast and lunch is free?
All meals are free.
But extra would be part of this fund?
Correct. So the only thing that's not free is if you want an additional meal or the ice cream, the cookies, the juices.
And is, is the Kathleen Malm book fair? Do you have Malm join us?
Yes, so again, often we, Ms. Sandoval does the book fair in the library and they do previews by class, so kids will come in to see what it is that they want to go home and tell mom and dad that they need money for, for the book fair when the book fair opens. Lots of times we have students that don't have money for the book fair and so again, we had a donation from a community member that if there was a student who we identified as, you know, not being able to bring money for the book fair because of their economically disadvantaged status, that there would be money in there so they could make a purchase.
And last but not least, the Bracket Tiger Booster Club.
And that was for golf, golf bags.
How many golf bags, you think?
I really, I don't, I'm not familiar with the cost, so I don't know, but I was telling Mr. Benacci that I'm very grateful to the Athletic Booster because they really do a great job in making sure that they give something to every sport, you know. There hasn't been a year so far where a sport gets left out. They'll visit with the coaches, at the beginning of the year, we have a Google Doc that we share where the coaches will put their wants and needs type of thing and then the Booster Club reviews that and then that's how they decide whether purchase they're going to provide.
Just a quick FYI, it looks like golf bags started around 150, so that's at the very low end.
That's good.
Kudos also to the Booster Club, I just learned that now we're on the record, they put up very nice signs for the basketball team as they were actually, the record was going to burn, the girls' basketball team.
I know, I said it last, I wouldn't, I guess, the beginning of the year, in summer, I think, when they donated that, what's that, scoreboard?
The scoreboard is amazing.
I mean, it's, it's a big expense and they donated, they raised money and I told them that since I've been back in Bracket for the last 12 years, this group of ladies in Booster Club, and I know Easy's part of it, they work extremely hard and they've done...
They've done big projects.
They've done a lot of projects for us and we're very appreciative of that and I gotta give them kudos, they're doing great.
Yes, I agree.
Thank you, all these organizations that are helping us out, it takes a village, we appreciate it all. Anything else? Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, including the minutes of January 13, 2025, area.
Wait, make some motion?
Second.
Okay, seconds? Close in favor? I'll have to abstain not being present for the minutes, but anything else, let's five.
I have to abstain because of one of the donations.
Okay, four, four yes and two abstentions. Motion passes. Item five, informational items. District Improvement Plan 5A, Campus Improvement Plan January Formative, presenter Eliza Gales, Mr. Jimenez and Mr. Miller.
So if you, sorry, mine got logged out. If you look, you'll see that we have attached both the campus improvement plans and the district improvement plans for everyone to look at. In January is when the principals and myself, we go back through the campus improvement plans and the district improvement plans to see where we are and how we're doing in regards to strategies. So if you open up the district improvement plan, you'll see it has the formative review, but I also made sure to include the notes. So for each of the strategies, you'll see that we are making progress, for example, in strategy one, for goal one, implementing planning protocol in order to establish an effective and aligned procedure for data analysis, instructional planning and implementation of peak's resource. So in November, I would say we were about halfway there, teachers were getting used to the new platform, we had built in the time for master schedule and so we were at about 50% is what we put in November. Now we've been using it, teachers have been using it, they're using their planning time, they're designing lessons, they're uploading those lessons, they're building comments, comment assessments, so that way they can use that for data analysis. Also based kind of on the time of year, we should be at 80%, we should, we should be able to be doing this and doing it effectively. Won't be completely finished until the end of the year, but that's, but that's what you're going to see pretty much throughout the DIPs and the CIPs, growth from November to, to January and just kind of depending on where we were in November, you'll see where we've, where we've grown. There are a handful that you'll see are marked at 100% and that's because we've already finished whatever we put as the strategy. So like for strategy seven, one of the things was to have our career and military day and so that's, that's been done for the 24, 25 year, we've already done the license, offered the pathways, started to offer the tests, so we put there that some of those are complete. So I don't know if y'all have any specific questions, if you want to take a few minutes to look at both the DIP and CIPs, I will do my best to share and answer. Another one would be like the implementation and monitoring of the BISD Guardian Program, which was strategy two under goal three, ensuring safety. We've already done the training, we've already implemented the program, so we're at a head and receptive lesson. And this does not require any action, it's just information.
Anybody have any question on this?
On strategy number three, utilizing the 21st Century Grant Program to provide summer school programs that support state requirement and free student learning opportunities and academic and also for enrichment. So the goal is to have about 70, that you currently have 75 students and you're looking to increase enrollment, but what is the actual objective to enhance learning opportunities and academics and to, and for enrichment?
The objective of the grant? So the objective of the grant is written into the grant. So the ACE program is the program that Ms. Newman came and gave the overview on, so it provides academic and instructional enrichment plus other types of activities, they do music, they do athletics, they'll do dance, piano, arts and crafts.
Do y'all, how do you, how do you measure that we're meeting, where, do we have like a baseline of where those students are and what is, how we improved in the areas that we're focused on with the ACE program?
So like academics, we use a program called M+ okay, and so it gives them a baseline of where they are instructionally, for example, reading tutorials and you came in as a fifth grader reading at 3.2, third grade, second month, and so that's... And so they'll do the M-class assessment again to see what the growth is. And all of that is required to be reported through the grant.
Okay, and so we see improvement through that. Does it tie back to this student participated in the ACE program that offered additional academic resources? And we have seen an increase of ten percent in the student score or reading level. Started at a third grade reading level, now it's at a fifth grade reading level. Do y'all measure to that detail?
Yes, yeah, we're required by the grant to do that. So then that, we're required to have a certain number of students, we're required to do what's called progress monitoring. And so every so often, we have to monitor that. The students that are recruited for the program are recruited because we are required to do an accelerated instructional plan for any student who does not meet criteria on the STAR test. So they're required to do thirty hours in every subject that they did not meet the grade level. So that's where we document how many hours even they're getting of additional supplemental instruction, accelerated intervention for the program.
Do y'all see, have y'all seen improvement through this ACE program? Through this ACE program, have you all seen positive outcomes and increased scores? Academically for the children?
For individual, yes, yes.
The level percentage?
And it varies from student to student. A percentage of students who have shown growth?
Yeah.
I don't have the percentage with me right now, no.
Is it data that you're reporting back to the grant?
Yes.
Okay, so you can bring that information?
Yes, probably at the end of, of the program.
Which would be?
Um, the summer.
Okay.
I mean, this program is, this, we're the second year of this program, correct?
Correct.
And the grant is for five years, so there'll be, this may will be two years plus three, correct?
Two years, yeah.
Yes, but this is the second year of the program?
Yes. We're in, we're in cycle two.
Can we see the baseline of where we were the first year compared to where we are now this second year?
But for, so it's by individual student. So like you would see this student, where they started and where they finished. This student, where they started and where they finished. Is that what you're asking?
Not by student because the-
You're asking for a whole.
Yeah, in aggregate.
That's what I understand, you're right.
So total number of students that may gain?
This is your denominator, this is your denominator.
And if you want to add to that, were the same stu-, were the students are in there this year? Or the same students that were there last year, or they're?
See, that's changing, I imagine, it's probably a lot of turnover.
It depends.
That's what I'm saying.
So like as a third grader, you passed reading and math, so you didn't have to go, you didn't, you didn't, you weren't required by the state to get AIP.
To go this year.
But then in fourth grade, you failed just reading. So then you're only required to get the AIP hours for reading.
So if Memo Guzmán was in the program last year, that doesn't necessarily mean that he's in the program this year?
Correct.
Well, we can also say of the fifty students that participated, thirty showed, um, increased their test scores that weren't required to repeat the same.
Excellent, so successful.
Yeah.
We just had a presentation vocally by a gentleman that's heavily involved with, uh, he's running for Texas Board of Education. And some of what he had to say about, about the STAR test and, and, and the way that, you know, it may or may not be served with students was kind of alarming. Anyway, I just wanted to throw that out there. It's kind of, this is, this seems like a pretty decent program for dealing with that some of these extreme requirements that the state has for students that don't pass. And a way of managing instructional requirements where they're not taken away from education time during the normal school day. You know, I, I personally, I kinda like the idea of a program like this even just for something scaled for GT kids. But if, if they were willing to participate as an enrichment, but, um.
And it's, like I said, it's- Reporting growth, I'll, I'm gonna do it based on the STAR. But lots of times you'll have a child who didn't pass the STAR test, but doesn't mean he didn't show growth. He may have gone from a third grade reading level to a three point nine. So he showed nine months of growth, but then took the STAR test and didn't pass. So I, you know, that we use M-class to see if there's growth in reading level. We use grades to see if there's growth in academic achievement. And then there's STAR, which is, but, you know, the state requirement. So, um, but I can do it based on, on the STAR test.
But ACE has also the requirements at the end of the year as to whether or not the program is servicing us as opposed to-
Right, they wouldn't provide funding to us, whether it's meeting the goals of the objective, correct? Yeah, so whenever you get grant funds, there's, there's a lot of requirements and reporting that has to, to happen. So if we're not meeting the required number of minutes, if we're not meeting the required number of students, then the funding goes, goes away.
All right, moving on to Item Six, Fire Alarms Implementation Update.
So what you have attached there is the final piece. And it is the contract with Intertel for the monitoring agreement. So the monitoring agreement was sent to Walsh Callejos for a review. They did do an addendum to the contract to make sure that everything was in order, did meet the criteria for school district contracts. We now have signed this contract. They're going to come, I think, one more time and just kind of go through the whole monitoring piece for us. And then I, both of our fire alarms will be set up and ready to go.
No more faxing? No more faxing?
No more having to send in that agreement.
No more fire watch, either?
No more fire watch, yeah.
Moving on to Item Seven, the action items. Seven A, General Election, May third. Consider, seven eight one, consider and take possible action regarding the Order of General Election for School Board of Trustees for May third, twenty twenty five.
Section three point zero zero four eight three of the Texas Election Code, the following authority shall order an election, the governing body of a political subdivision other than a county or city that has unelected officers for the general election for those officers. An election ordered by an authority of political subdivision shall be ordered no later than the sixty-second day before Election Day. So it is the recommendation of the administration to call Order of General Election for School Board of Trustees to be held on May third, two thousand twenty five.
Do I have a motion to accept the administration's recommendation?
Sure.
Matt makes the motion.
Sorry.
Wait, seconds, we have, is there any discussion? No discussion, all of the favor? Pass the unanimously. Item seven eight two, consider and take possible action regarding equipment rental agreement with Kenny County for the May third, twenty twenty five School Board of Trustee General Election.
Bracket ISD will conduct a general election in May. Therefore, Kenny County is required to rent their equipment to local entities in order to conduct their general elections. Three units will be needed, one for early voting, one for Election Day, and one touchscreen model to meet the ADA guidelines. The Secretary of State allows Kenny County to charge a maximum of ten percent per machine per week. Bracket ISD will rent the election equipment for two weeks, beginning April eighteenth, twenty twenty five, to May fifth, twenty twenty five. It is the recommendation of the administration to approve the election agreement and pay Kenny County two thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars for the equipment rental.
Do I have a motion to accept the administration's recommendation? Totally makes the motion? Wait, seconds, is there any discussion?
I have a question, that's twenty-nine hundred dollars for two weeks and the election. Early voting and the election.
That's what the whole topic is.
Wait, wait. All those in favor? Pass unanimously. Item seven eight three, consider and take possible action regarding the appointment of the election judge and alternate judge.
The governing body is required to appoint an election judge and an alternate judge for each single election. It is the recommendation of the administration to appoint Ida Ortiz as the election judge and Luisa Jacqueline Calvio as the alternate judge for the May third, twenty twenty five general election.
Do I have a motion to accept the administration's recommendation?
Certainly.
Totally makes the motion?
I'll say.
Wait, seconds, is there a discussion? No discussion, all of the favor? Pass unanimously. Seven eight four, consider and take possible action regarding miscellaneous costs related to the May third, twenty twenty five election, including the hourly pay for election judge and election jurors.
During the election, miscellaneous costs occur, including newspaper publications, election supplies, and hourly pay for election workers. The election judge's hourly rate is twelve dollars and an election worker at eleven dollars. This rate is aligned with the Kenny County and the City of Bracketville. It is the recommendation of the administration to approve miscellaneous costs related to the May third, twenty twenty five general election, including hourly pay of the election judge at twelve dollars an hour and election clerks at eleven dollars an hour.
Do I have a motion to accept the administration's recommendation?
Sure.
Matt makes the motion?
I'll say.
Wait, seconds, you have any discussion?
Yes, I have a question, do we have a budget for the miscellaneous costs?
I'm on you.
Yes, we budget for election costs every year to include the rentals and the amount of aid to all the clerks and work people.
But I'm here, it has, it's the recommendation of the administration to approve miscellaneous costs. Do we allocate a budget for that? It's included because it's, it's considered miscellaneous costs includes newspaper publications, elections and parties?
Yes, all of that, we have a separate line item for required publications as the state requires. They have to be separate. And then all of the other things are considered, um, incidentals of the election, so there is another two on our budget.
So do you know how much they can spend on supplies?
Yes, usually we prepare that budget based on what they spent the prior year. And some of the supplies Ms. Ivanias carries forward from one year to the next, like for example, file cabinets and until they're no longer in the school.
Oh, don't think so, ballots and stuff like that.
So it's really the disposable, mostly the electric bids, the ballots, the printing.
What are the cost slides?
If you give me a few seconds, I'll look. Do you have a number? Oh, so it's different, we split the cost within the different entities.
Okay, all those in favor? Pass unanimously. Moving on to seven B. Consider and take appropriate action regarding policy update one through four affecting local policies. Seven B one, legal policies.
So the first one is legal policies, and legal policies are not adopted by the board. TASB recommends the board to review them, but they're, we don't adopt them, they're legal. So if we go down to seven, B two, that's the local policy, that's where we have to take action. TASB Policy Service issues numbered updates in response to changing legal authority or to implement structural changes to improve the quality and layout of the subscriber's localized policy manual. Numbered updates occur two to three times a year. Policy Service will examine the subscriber's local policy manual, determine how to update the changes affecting the manual, and make appropriate changes and recommendations. The result is a localized update packet unique to the subscriber. The typical localized update packet contains appropriate legal policies, so those are automatically updated for us, licensed under the separate ISD Policy Service subscription, and adoptable, which is our local policies, model policies consistent with legal authority. So basically, TASB makes sure that our local is aligned to legal. It is the recommendation of the administration to add, revise, or delete local policies as offered by TASB Policy Service for consideration and according to the instruction sheet for TASB Localized Policy Manual Update One Twenty Four, CAA Local Fiscal Management Goals and Objectives, CDA Local Other Revenues, CY Local Intellectual Property, DH Local Employee Standards of Conduct, EHB Local Curriculum Design, EHBB Local Special Programs, FFG Local Student Welfare, and GKA Local Community Relations. I do have notes, but they were loaded up there, so I don't know if you want me to go through the notes or if y'all wanna have, ask any questions regarding those.
Do you have any discussion? Do I have a motion to accept the administration's recommendation?
Certainly.
Totally makes the motion?
I'll say.
Wait, seconds, do we have discussion?
I had a question. Are there more than cleanup of the previous policies or is it, what, what's actually big changes in there?
Um, there's several, and that's just that it's, I can go through each one. Or some of them is like just take up design name, so it has to be either.
So cleanup, yeah, cleanup?
Yes, and some of them is adding stuff, like now we added vaping not being allowed by employees. You know, the word vape wasn't in there before. So cleanup, clarification, some revisions under other revenues and investments. They documented that investment pools had to be registered with the Texas State Securities. Intellectual property was about, you know, documents that teachers create using teacher computer during teacher time. That belongs to the school district because you did it on our time, so just clarification. Each one of them was a little bit different.
Anybody have some any questions on, on policies?
I mean, most of what I'm seeing here looks like minor wording changes and typings. Yeah, I don't see nothing really jumps out to me.
All those in favor? Pass unanimously. All right, seven C, consider and take possible action regarding the second quarter investment report. Ms. Garcia.
Yes, so for CDA legal, not less than quarterly, the investment officer shall prepare and submit to the board a written report of investment transactions for all funds covered by the Public Funds Investment Act for the preceding reporting period. This report shall be presented not less than quarterly to the board and superintendent within a reasonable time after the end of that period, but also for government, code of twenty two fifty six. And the report is attached for your, um, review and consideration and is the recommendation of administration to accept the second quarter new investment report as presented.
Do I have a motion to accept the administration's recommendation?
I'm making motion to accept.
Claudia makes the motion to accept.
Sure.
Matt, seconds, we have discussion?
Other than the interest rates still holding.
It is holding, it's only dropped a little bit, we were over five, if you remember last year, a couple of quarters. But I was afraid it would go lower, but no, we are doing still decent here.
All those in favor? Pass unanimously. Seven D, consider and take possible action regarding budget amendments? I don't see that here, is that?
No.
Thank you. Moving on to item eight, Superintendent's Report.
So we'll begin with our events. So past events, this last Friday, we had our first district advisory committee meeting for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So we did post on Facebook, on our school website, looking for community members to participate. We did get a few more community members on the district advisory. We didn't have a whole bunch show up, but we, we did have some that showed interest, and so they'll continue to be invited. The first order of business of the district advisory meeting was to start looking at the twenty-five, twenty-six calendar. So we hope to bring that to the board for March. It was also a teacher work day, so we provided lunch and, and the advisory committee members came and had our meeting during lunchtime. Upcoming events, we do have the Superintendent's Goals Workshop this Thursday. So we will be meeting at five thirty, dinner will be provided. February fourteenth is the end of the six weeks, it's an early out for students. March thirteenth is our annual World History Medieval Fair, and it is March. So kind of jumped out of order there, but March thirteenth is correct, and it is the Medieval Fair. February seventeenth is the President- February seventeenth is a President's Day holiday. Um, we have our next board meeting, um, a regular board meeting on March the tenth. Then we will be closed, the office, um, and the school district will be closed, March seventeenth to the twenty first for spring break. March twenty ninth has been selected for the, uh, junior, senior prom. Um, we'll have the red carpet at six thirty and again, please put it on your calendars, we love to see y'all at our events. And then just to save the date for our SLI, uh, summer leadership institute, that is June eleventh through June fourteenth. Uh, for department reports, um, athletics was, uh, reporting on basketball. Um, boys are headed to playoffs, they are right now tied for that first, for district champions. Um, they have a game tomorrow, um, at six thirty and so district title is on the line. Um, Coach Jaeger is not here tonight because he is at the girls' game. Um, unfortunately, we are down right now at the half and we're pretty significantly, um, down, but it's still a lot to celebrate because the girls have not been to a playoff round in twenty-two, since twenty twenty-two, so.
Did he drive the bus?
Excuse me?
Did he drive the bus?
No.
Okay.
Um, so that was for athletics. For instruction, um, at the beginning of this, uh, semester, we did meet our requirement of offering GT training and Alps training to our staff. Um, we also were required to offer special ed training and so we've been able to put all of that on vector solutions for our staff, so they log in and complete their compliance requirements through vector solutions. And then this year TEA has transitioned to a different way to submit PNS data. And so Mrs. Price and Mrs. Christy Betta have worked very closely together, um, to submit our PNS data and we were able to submit all our data, what we call fatal briefs. So, um, thank you very much, we know that was a lot of, a lot of work. So those are just a few of the highlights. Um, attendance at both Jones and at secondary is taking a hit. Um, right now, we're, the both campuses are sitting at about ninety-three, ninety-four percent. Um, there's a lot of flu going around, so, um, I think both principals will say it's, it's been, it's been tough. Um, but discipline looks good, so we continue to monitor that. Both my principals and the two counselors were in Del Rio for, um, safety threat, uh, safety training, um, and that was offered in Del Rio with different law enforcement groups. So they were gone for three days, we missed them, we had to hold down the port without them, um, but they, they learned a lot and we've had enough, we haven't had an opportunity to debrief, but we will, will be doing that soon. And flu was hitting hard. Um, cafeteria, I think Mr. Guzman had asked about breakfast. Um, so in the month of January, they served four thousand five hundred and fifty-nine breakfasts. Um, this is up about two hundred meals from last year, which is good because that helps with our reimbursement. Um, we do feel like it probably has a lot to do with the grabbing though breakfast that we're offering at secondary, so, um, Ms. Reda is usually out there with, you know, her grabbing though cart and, uh, kids can come by and, and get their breakfast. Um, so in regards to depart, oh, then our final department, um, report would be from our maintenance department. So I think the big one is that today we had a TEA unannounced intruder audit. So, um, he did show up today, he was stopped by a staff member before, um, making it onto any building, so into any building, so that was great. He walked around with Mr. Solis, um, all our doors were one hundred percent compliant. So all our exterior door and our interior door, so, uh, no reported issues and we are one hundred percent compliant. We've got a TEA team coming, um, on Thursday for a vulnerability audit, so they'll be going through all our policies and all our handbooks, um, code of conduct, um, emergency operation plans and just, um, checking our, our work with their rubrics. Uh, they definitely said this was not a gotcha, this was a way to help us grow and improve our safety, so, um, we'll get a report probably shortly after the audit is complete, but Mr. Solis and his team have played a vital role with that.
This person that came in, was he wearing a coat and tie or was he wearing a hoodie or what?
No, he was wearing jeans and a button.
Yeah, just an average, just, just kind of wanted to, I felt like he wanted to blend in.
Yeah, yeah, very, not, definitely not coat and tie, just could have been apparent, which was nice because somebody stopped him even though he definitely could have been apparent. Um, we've been working on getting the tennis court, putting some, investing a little bit into our tennis courts, so, uh, we have been prepping the tennis courts, um, we got newly painted, um, cement walls, so our own people have been doing that, so we Melvin has been out there painting these cement walls. And then we are looking at, um, replacing the net posts, which we hope to arrive this week and then install that immediately. So again, those are just a few highlights of the different things going on at the departments.
I know the track is about to start practicing in the morning, is it, did we read the lights again?
We haven't yet, but we will.
Okay. Um, I wanna commend Mrs. Schwan for doing again the pyramid deal fair. Uh, having four kids that went through it at one point, it's, it's fun. It's a lot of, a lot of work, I, I recommend you guys attend.
The medieval fair?
Yes, the medieval fair, it's, it's a lot of work, kids participate, they dress up in all their Renaissance evil costumes. They have to, are they doing the turkey?
Mm-hmm, they're doing the turkey legs.
Turkey legs.
And Schwan is a cook, right?
It's, it's, it's fun, it's a nice thing to look, see if you're spending time.
Better than a typical rent fair, you gotta love it, you gotta love the people drinking.
No, you can't do that.
No. Can't have it.
All right, well, thank you, Mrs. Schwan. Move on to item nine, post session. Conversation with attorney pursuant to government code five five one dot zero seven one regarding administrative contracts and pursuant to Texas government code five five one dot zero seven four, discussion regarding personnel, we'll go on executive session at sixty-four.
We'll be in the same room that we were. So the score is fifty and eighteen.
Okay, reconvene into open session at 7:20. And we have some action items.
If you open the top one, it's on there for you to read. The one that says Superintendent Administration organizations.
Okay, Superintendent's recommendation for Administrator Term Contracts 2025 through 2026. 2026 and 2027. Stephanie Manis, Secondary Principal, Term Renew. Four. One year. One year extension. Holly Harris, Assistant Principal. Term one year, Term. Two-year term. Renew. Andrea Isla, Elementary Counselor. Two-year extension for renew.
Two-year term.
Two-year term. Kenneth Miller, Elementary Principal, Two-year term. Kristi Price, Director of Instruction and Accountability. One-year term.
One-year extension.
One-year extension, sorry. Cynthia Welch, Counselor Secondary. One-year extension. Cody Jaeger, Athletic Director. Two-year term. We're gonna group all together?
Yeah, we're gonna go down this one.
All vote on this one?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Motion.
Oh, sorry. Mixed motion, except, I mean, with mixed motion.
Second.
Number seconds. All of the favor? Oh, one extension. Passes. Five. One extension. Yes, one extension.
Tally.
Tally. Okay, it passes. Superintendent's recommendation for Administrator Non-Certified Contracts 2025. 2026. 2026 and 2027. Amalia Garza, Business Manager. One-year. Extension. Matthew Munoz, Technology Manager. One-year extension. Javier Solis, Director of Facilities and Operations. One-year extension. Do we have motion to accept this?
Sure.
Matt makes the motion?
Second.
Claudia seconds. All of the favor? Passing honestly. Okay. Moving on to resignations. We have a motion to accept Marvin Black's resignation, effective February 11th. Seven. Matt makes the motion?
Second.
Number seconds. All of the favor? Passing honestly. We have the motion to accept Mrs. Melissa Newman. Congratulations, effective on June 30th, 2025. So, Tally makes the motion?
Second.
Claudia seconds. All of the favor? Passing honestly. With no further actions, no further business, we adjourn at 7:24.